That was Dave calling me. He had to reboot his computer. He'll be on very shortly.
Hi, this is Terry, the court reporter. I'm gonna have to just reboot my computer just for my real time. For some reason, it's I just it just quick shutdown. I'll be right back. Don't start without me.
I don't remember the last time I rebooted my computer. It's been a while.
You must work on Macs.
Andrew, what are you stuck in the car again?
I'm back.
Yeah.
You're like me. It's the third office.
Too small, yeah, too, too small kids, not a lot of quiet.
That's it, brother.
All right, I think Dave's with us now. Chairman Milliken here.
I can. Sorry about that. You know, I had to reboot my computer. Didn't realize I had the Dan Patrick show on another screen. So when the second the meeting started, an Australian accent came on. I'm like, who works for Tordi Gallus is from Australia. It was the guy Dan Patrick was interacting with in the interview that was playing on another window. All right, sorry for being late. I did have to reboot. Do we have a quorum?
We do.
Let's stand for the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible. If we could call the roll, please.
Sir, A. Postado.
Here.
A. Lewitt.
Here.
D. Mello.
Present.
E. Reyes.
Here.
And Russo.
Present.
J. Sanford.
Present.
E. Seitzman.
Present.
And it's Commissioner Seitzman's birthday today. So everybody wish her happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We're gonna forgive her if she remains off screen. That way she can, she can maybe side party on the low key. And commend her for attending despite it being her birthday. All right, the announcement regarding notice, I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the housing authority of the city of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular meeting of Thursday, March 10th, 2022 was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger as a public notice on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. As notification to the general public of the meeting, sent to the City Clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, Hoboken Library and Public Police Department. And posted on the authority website on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct that the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of an emergency declared by the governor of New Jersey, the meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA 10:4-9.3, which states that a public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meetings Act in conducting a meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article 3, Section 7 of the Authority Bylaws, which allows for participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone conference or similar communications equipment. All right, and then, councilors, I believe you have your addendum.
We do indeed, Mr. Chair. In keeping with the authority's normal practice of affording members of the public the opportunity to comment at monthly board meetings, the authority will be accepting comment during this meeting in one of three ways. First, comments can be sent by email to hha@myhhanj, that's hha@myhhanj.com, now until 7:30 PM. All timely and legal appropriate comments received by email will be read aloud by an authority representative for all attendees of the meeting to hear. Second, beginning at approximately 7:30, the authority will allow access to participants one at a time to comment using their telephone or through Zoom's audio function. Third, if you're participating in the meeting using Zoom from a web browser or smart device, you can submit comment using the Zoom Q and A function, which can be accessed by clicking the Q and A icon at the bottom of your screen. We require that any member of the public who wishes to submit comment using the Q and A function, please limit themselves to a single submission rather than submitting multiple brief comments. In the event that a member of the public submits more than one comment, only the first legally appropriate comment will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments submitted after 7:30 PM will be rejected and will not be read aloud at the meeting. In addition, please note that while Zoom video of this meeting is being streamed through Facebook Live, public comment will not be accepted through Facebook or Facebook Live. Any member of the public watching through Facebook Live who wishes to comment may do so by email, by telephone, or by using the Zoom Q and A function. Email address again is hha@myhhanj.com and the telephone number is 646-558-8656. With a webinar ID of 485-881-849. Finally, please be advised that the standard practice of the executive director and members of the board is to refrain from engaging in a back and forth discussion during the public comment portion of authority meetings. However, in light of the ongoing crisis, the authority realizes that limited exceptions to that practice may be necessary. On behalf of the authority, I thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. At this time, in order to allow more time for members of the public to submit comment in advance of 7:30, I recommend that the board consider adopting a resolution to reorder the agenda to allow the executive to direct to present his report at this time.
I'll make a motion to adopt said resolution.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good job, counselor. I know who to call to when I'm telling my students they're speaking too fast and not enunciating in class and they give a presentation. Very good. All right, so if we can move on to the director's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. First, I would just like to say that to remind everyone that my recovery from my knee replacement surgery has had me working predominantly from home with a limited presence at the presence at the office, although I've been getting in a couple of times a week. However, I remain fully engaged in all aspects of our operations through these great electronic means we've gotten used to. So, so you may not see me around as much at the office, but that's increasing, I think, weekly. I do have a statement regarding some assurances to the board, our residents, and the Hoboken community that HHA always strives to abide by our policies and federal law on all aspects of our operations. Our staff takes our responsibilities in administering the assistance that we have available in a fair and consistent manner very seriously. For example, we follow our guidelines as set out in our admissions and continuity policy in assigning units to prospective tenants and in offering transfer units to our residents. We understand that there is not sufficient supply of low and moderate income housing available in our area, making our responsibility as guardians of that public trust that much more important. In that light, I'd like to remind everyone, should any individual or group have concerns regarding the administration of our resources by any HHA staff, I request that those specific concerns be brought to my attention. A full investigation of any verifiable allegation is my commitment to our community at all times. So if there are any issues, please, please bring them up to us. Secondly, our community solar initiative has a resolution in front of you tonight. We are looking forward later on in our meeting to discussing that when the resolution comes up. COVID-19 issues are changing quickly these days. The pandemic seems to have hopefully turned a corner, knock on wood, with restrictions beginning to be lifted state and nationwide. With that in mind, we are examining our best practices and expect to have new guidelines for use of our community rooms published by the end of March. We'll be working on that as the new guidelines come out. Hoboken Housing Forward, this is the big news in my report tonight, and I think what's going to take up hopefully some time because we're really excited about this. First, before we talk about our draft plan, I would again like to thank the board for the adoption of the expanded development principles at last month's meeting. The principles have been reviewed with HHA residents are up on our website, and I think they've been well received. And again, those those guiding principles that the board has adopted has helped the whole planning team. As we've gone through development of this plan, know where our touch points are, what we should be doing, what we shouldn't be doing. So again, thank you for those principles. I know many of you worked hard on those and and they've really helped. But the big news tonight is that I'm excited to formally present to the board and the public HHA's draft strategic plan. You know, we've been working on this plan for nearly a year now, and I hope to gain approval of the plan by the board at the April 14th meeting. Over the next weeks, we will be reviewing the plan in a series of meetings with our residents, with our resident advisory board. Next Wednesday, March 16th, we'll be holding an authority-wide resident meeting via Zoom at 6:00 PM. We will also be holding a follow-up to that meeting on April 6th, before the next board meeting to go over what by then will be a pretty final plan, still open to some comments, but a pretty final plan. On April 6th, we'll be gathering any final comments on the plan from our residents. The draft plan has been posted on our website, so for those of you listening, go to our website, take a look at the plan, read it through. Can be reviewed by the entire community. It has been widely disseminated throughout the community. All participants, participants in our extensive stakeholder process over the past year have been emailed a link directly to the to the draft plan. Further, my team and I remain available for any form that might be useful to expand community awareness and understanding of the draft plan. Comments and input regarding the draft plan are very welcome. We, we, we continue to value, value your input. And an email address has been provided for comments to be submitted. It's the same email address that we use for comments at this meeting, that hha@myhhanj.com. Feel free to send comments to that email address. Of course, we will also accept input in any fashion that it is submitted, by phone, by letter, by note in our Dropbox, by email. We ask that comments be made hopefully by April 1st, so we've got a few weeks to take a look at the plan because good comments will be incorporated into the final plan, and we need a little bit of time to do that before the April 14th guideline. Having said all that, I'd like to take a moment to ask our team to give a somewhat of an executive overview summary of the plan. As a kind of a guide to where we're going from here. So I'd like to turn this over to Troy McGee and the team to, to, to give us a little guide through the plan.
And, and welcome team, and thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate all the efforts you guys have made over the past year plus. I think we're selling ourselves short to just fall a year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome.
Well, I just want to just take time out to just thank everyone for their participation as well. And also, I, I do want to just thank the higher rule of the communities group and the Tordi Gallus team members as well for all the hard work that they have put in. So without further delay, Susan, I'll ask you to now present the overview, and then the other team members have a few things that they would like to present as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We are very excited that we that a draft is out, and it's been a very collaborative effort with a lot of stakeholders and you guys as the authority and the staff. So I am just going to highlight, I am not going to get into all the details that's in the plan. I'm sure that you have not, most of you have not had an opportunity to really get into the plan and read it. It's a substantial document. But again, I just want to highlight some of the key components of it that are more developed within the plan. Obviously, the authority guiding principles were very helpful in terms of us getting where we needed to get in terms of the strategy, the design and the phasing of, of the project. The planning process, as you all know, was very extensive and was multifaceted, really. We tried to use a number of planning and outreach techniques to get as much as we could in terms of involvement. And, and that did happen with the help of everyone. And the, and the planning, the staff of the housing authority. As one of the key elements, as you well know, is the one for one replacement of all the existing units. And, and that through a, through redevelopment and through substantial rehabilitation. And that's laid out in there. There were a lot of different planning considerations that went into this, as you well know. Modifications to the street grid so that also it provided a more walkable community. And of, and the use of bicycles. The, the key design component was also to integrate the new housing authority properties and, and buildings into the fabric of the city. That was, that was a key piece. And and also as part of it, more new and improved open space. Stormwater management improvements, obviously flooding was a key consideration. And we also outline in, in the plan is a six-phase process in terms of how to strategically redevelop the, the different sites without creating problems in terms of displacement and such. So all of those are very detailed, laid out in this plan. We have a number of maps, the graphics, you know, in terms of trying to visually show as well as in narrative as well. So I hope that you all have an opportunity to read this in detail, which I'm sure you will. Great bedtime reading. It's wonderful. And we anticipate your thoughtful comments, which you've had thoughtful comments throughout this process, and look forward to hearing from you tonight in terms of any initial comments or questions you may have. And as we go through this process over the next month, to hear from you as to other comments or questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And I just want to reiterate with Susan, the incredible debt we owe to the, all of the Hoboken community for their input into this plan. And from the planning team, where would we go from here? Is there anyone else from the planning team that would like to speak? Okay, very good.
I think we were just trying to keep it short. So, you know, get the discussion started and, and yeah.
We'd like to hear from, from all of you at this stage. Clearly, you've heard a lot of the details as we've been meeting with you periodically. There shouldn't be any surprises, I hope not, in the plan. And we anticipate that with the residents that we will be provide a little bit more meat on the bones as such, more detail to make sure that there's a total understanding of what is, what is proposed.
Very good. Thank you all. So we will be going to a resident meeting next week where we'll be reviewing the plan in detail there. You're all welcome to tune in to that meeting as well. And then we will have another resident meeting on April 6th to go over and take a look at the plan from there as well as we move toward, hopefully, an April approval. I, I couldn't be more proud of the job that this team has done. Sometimes it seems like it took forever. But as I always like to say, we need to dot those i's and cross those t's because this plan is going to be the foundation. The, this plan is what's going to put our future of the Hoboken Housing Authority on a solid, rock-solid foundation. And it will give us the ability to come right out of the starting gate and start looking at our financing options and start looking at what we need to do to move forward and get that first building built and, and move on from there. So again, I'd like to thank you all so, so much for your participation over the last year. Anything else on the Hoboken Housing Forward strategic plan before we move on?
Do we have, do we have a results from the survey?
Yes, I did attach the results of the resident survey to my report to you. It will also be appended to our final plan when we put out the final plan. And I didn't, I wasn't planning on presenting that tonight because it is going to be part of the final plan here. But yes, we do have the results of that commissioner. And you have it in my report to you.
Yeah, I, I mean, you got your report at like 1:30, 2 o'clock, so.
Yes, I understand that.
What, um, what, what, how many people wound up doing it?
The most we had on any one question was about 141 responses.
What, and what percentage is that of our?
Yeah, it's only about 10% based on units.
And are we like, is that, is, are we just giving up on that or?
Well, I think it's for, for what this survey is, it is the survey. And, you know, we're, I don't think we have any plans on putting the survey back out and replicating the survey. We do have a Hoboken Community Survey out right now as well that for advertising out there, which will be, the results will be back by March 20th. But I think this in combination of our resident meetings coming up on March 16th, and then again on April 6th, is our strategy to try to get the word out and get the feedback. And, and so that's where we are on, on the survey results right now.
What is the, what, what does the planning team suggest is an acceptable percentage of residents to complete a survey?
Mark, if I may.
You may.
So, you know, residents typically get meeting fatigue through the planning process. The more meetings you have, there's lots of repetition. And the, the participation, in my experience, we've done 40 or 50 similar planning processes is the longer you've been in the planning process, the less participation you get in the survey until your survey deals with relocation. So when, when your first building is coming up and, you know, in your case, you're not going to have to relocate people to clear a site and then redevelop the site and then bring them back. That's the scariest kind of relocation. But where you're going to build a building first and people are going to be able to move from where they are to the new building, they're much, it's, it's a lot less stressful. It's still stressful. Who, you know, about, what are their options? What if they don't want to move to that building? What if they want to voucher instead? And I know your policy is you don't want to use vouchers for relocation. Some people may want, want to request that. Some may want to move to another public housing site that's, if they're on the main campus, they don't want to be amidst all the construction that's going to go on for years there. They'd be happy moving to one of the other properties that's not going to be torn down. So when you get to that stage and you're starting to deal with real options of where people can go and what the process is going to be and who's going to pay for their relocation costs and where do they store things and all those kinds, what about my kids if I, you know, crossing a line into a different school district? That gets a whole lot of interest. And a survey around relocation issues always gets a very high level of participation. So that's kind of a general, general answer. I think 10% is a representative sample. It, it tells you a fair amount of information, tells you that, you know, 10% of your population. Here's, here's the way they're looking at it. And, and you didn't get the same answers. You got an array of answers. So they probably represent a range of opinions that would spread across the rest of your population as well.
Well, I remember a couple of months ago, we talked about there was an example of a housing authority that you worked with that you, you paid the respondents for the survey. Is that, is that right? Do you remember that?
That might have been someone from Troy's team. We have, we haven't particularly done that in, in our projects, but, but, you know.
Has anyone, has anyone on the call done that?
Matt Tordi Gallus, because as far as with us, we, that's not a service we provide, doing surveys.
I would personally be adverse to that. I don't, it, it gets into an area that some might find distasteful to pay for people for survey results. And I'm not sure if that would compromise the statistical reliability of it either. So, so we're all, we're all comfortable with 10% of our residents filling out a survey about the future of where they live? I mean, my memory of taking market courses, 10% is actually not insignificant when it comes to statistical reliability. Am I wrong?
I'll, I'll go ahead and say to just, you know, I think Susan touched on it earlier, that the survey is, is a more recent way to solicit input, but we've, we've had a, an inclusive process from, you know, at least since last summer. Where we've had in-person meetings and, and digital meetings at a pretty regular rate. So we don't just take the results of the survey, but we're taking all of the feedback we got from all those meetings. But the initial kickoff meeting itself, you know, I think it was in September, was, was well attended, and we got very, very good responses from that, that we, we actually did kind of, as you see in the report, it's, it's kind of, you know, charted, and we, we kind of took out the key issues from there. And that's kind of what we base our, our designs off. charted and we, we kind of took out the key issues from there and that's kind of what we base our, our designs off of too. So it's, 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 the survey is one part of this, but it's really a, a part of a much bigger whole of outreach and consensus building.
And, and even before September, I mean, the meeting that we had, very large meeting on Mom and Johnson Field where you broke into smaller groups and you guys were there for hours. That was, that was before September.
Yes, excuse me, my dates are, it's a long time ago.
Yes, Commissioner Reyes.
I just wanted to say, I understand where Andrew's coming from about it only being 10%, but as a resident, I cannot say what else could we have done to get them to do it. We absolutely did everything. It was online. The manager sent it on paper to every apartment. It was in the hallways. It was posted in the hallways. I think we took every action possible to get every resident involved and informing them and making sure that they did the survey. So it's unfortunate that we only got 10%. But in this, for this instance, I can honestly say that the housing authority did try their best to get everyone involved and get everybody, um, everyone involved and get everybody to actually complete the survey. There was nothing else that they could do. I mean.
Well, I mean.
I agree, I agree. Please, Commissioner, I, I agree, Commissioner Reyes, and, and your efforts should be applauded and thank you for all the work you did. I know you did a great deal of work around this and then in your committee. Yeah, I also, I think we want to be leery of, it gets to a point where you're, you're forcing a response and you're getting somebody who's less invested if you're having to really pull and tug at them to respond. And do you really want their information to be outweighing somebody who's, who's extremely vested and really is thinking about their responses? So there's that.
I, I, yeah, I, I totally disagree with that. I mean, I would think we would want every resident's input, no matter what the case is. The only thing I would say to Barbara's comments is, you know, when there's an election, for example, there, there's like six or 700 signatures signed for a petition to get someone on the ballot, usually in the housing authority. So like, what, what does that mean? That, that means some way, somehow, someone, someone knocked on every door to get.
I, I really want to keep my comments to myself as far as the whole election and signature thing that, that you're talking about because I can assume how many of those signatures are really obtained properly and if those people are even real residents of the housing authority. So I don't think that was a good analogy.
Yeah, I mean.
Agreed, agreed.
The, the point I was trying to make, obviously, without the validity of our elections, is that, do we, do we knock on every door? And, and look, I know it's a daunting task and I appreciate everyone's hard work, but to say that we did everything we could, the one thing that we didn't do, which again is probably a very challenging task, is to knock on every single door and, and if you don't, and if you don't want to vote, do the survey, then we, we, we tally marked it. Okay, resident and 2E did not want to do deserve it. And we go right down the list until we get every single door. And if the person never answered, then there's a tally mark that they never answered. But unless you're ready to show me that those stats, I still will always assume that there's something else we could have done.
Merchant, the Florida jurors, thank you.
Thank you. So we did, we did attempt the door-to-door. And unfortunately, what it is, is that what we got from the survey is mostly our senior population because they're home. So our families weren't home. So that's why they wound up getting the doors, you know, the service on the door because they would go door-to-door, but they're not usually home at that time. So I agree, potentially it could have been something at nighttime. But during the daytime and what was done, we did try other door-to-door and that's why the senior, the senior response was the biggest because when you go door-to-door to the seniors, they were usually home and eager to answer the survey. Kind of to high miss point, I think the fatigue is setting in and I think, and while we did get a lot of people too saying, because we not only tried, we tried some phone calls too, to see if we can get some of those folks on the phone, see if we could fill it on the phone with them. And a lot of people say, well, it's not going to matter. It's not going to matter. And the shame of it is that I think people are feeling that maybe if they fill the survey, it doesn't make a difference, that it's something's already determined is what they're feeling. But the reality is, is that we are interested and I agree with you that I think that it would be awesome to get 100% participation. If we can make it, you know, some kind of requirement or something of, you know. But, but I, I do want to say this one, we, we tried, we did try Andrew, that could we have done something more? I'm sure there's something, but we did go door-to-door even.
I, I would be interested to know exactly. You bring up an interesting point about, uh, you bring up an interesting point about the response that it doesn't matter. I think that in itself, like I'd like to know how many people responded with that because I think everyone on this call here would, would, would agree that that's very important to know that our, some of our residents don't think their voice matters and don't think that answering a survey matters for the benefit of where they're going to be living for the, the, you know, the rest of their lives. Uh, we, we, I think we all would, would want them to, to care enough about it. And, and I like to see how we're going to change that sentiment over the next couple of months to a year that our residents are feeling like their voice matters and feeling like they have a say in this and you know, i- i- if they don't want these type of amenities, then that's what we're going to listen to. And I, I, I do think that's a, that's a big issue.
The one thing.
People don't.
That might be helpful too, at this process is that when you see the results of the survey, we kept the, the responses of the people that did participate in their own words so that when they see it, it's going to be part of the plan, part of the document, that they start to see that, hey, when I spoke up, they used my comment. It's actually a part of the plan. So that they know that the next time that we ask of them, please speak up, they'll want to speak up because they, they'll, they'll see that the people that did speak up made it to the plan. So hopefully that'll start to build that trust little by little. And I think we're getting better at, in, as we're doing these outdoor things and as COVID goes away and we can get more in person. I think that's going to do the touch because I think it is hard to get it through Zoom to get the excitement sometimes or get as many people to log on. So hopefully as we develop and I'm sure there's going to be more opportunities where we need to make decisions and we want to involve them. And any way that we can do it, a part of our software even where maybe we can incorporate something in our portal. Because our portal, our, our new software has a portal that, that has other functions in it. Where maybe we can, we can put something directly there for them to, to go in and we can see who, who of our tenants have filled out the survey through our own portal rather than through a, you know, a request or survey.
I would like to make the point that, that Brian made, that, that the accumulative effect of all of the meetings we've had over the summer, over the year. The, the survey is just one tool among many and all of the feedback we've gotten from our residents, from the community, from the police, from people that know us very well, I, I think we're seeing a pattern here and I think we're, we're getting to the truth of what people want. And I think what people want is they want to see us make progress. They want to see us be united and start to rehabilitate and redevelop the Hoboken Housing Authority. So we can give people the kind of, of buildings that they deserve to live in. And I think that's going to be what gets their attention in the end. When they see us be successful, which I am positive we will at this point. And that first building starts going up, the first people are moved into that building. And, and we start to, people start to see that this isn't smoke and mirrors. This isn't the same old shuck and jive dance that we're actually moving forward here. And I think we're positioned better than we ever have to do that. I think that's going to be the proof of the pudding. And again, I think the, the survey is just one tool and everything we've done to come up to this plan and we're not done yet. We're heading back out for resident meetings and more community input. Uh, so I think in that regard, even a 10% response on the survey is significant.
Uh, Chairman, I, I just have two more things and I'll, I'm done, I'm done with this subject. If I can.
Two more things.
Yep, the, the one thing is, i- i- if you guys, I don't know if you've done this already, but is there a spot where you have dial up, you've written down and kind of summarized all these notes from these meetings in collection with the data from the survey so that we have one central location of looking at, uh, you know, everyone's responses?
Uh, yes. So there, there is a, a whole chapter in the book about kind of the, the planning process and the, and that actually kind of summarizes and charts the comments we received so far, but also I, for the final report, I was just writing this down as a note that we will include in the appendix. The, uh, we took photos of all of the, the written comments that we took in, for our in-person meetings. And we actually, and then we, we charted those in an Excel sheet. So we can either put the Excel, uh, you know, printed those comments in, in a charted form where we actually show the actual written comments and in a photograph, photographs. So you guys can see those. And, and that's another way, I think Frank was the one who mentioned it, is a great way to see that, okay, my comments are, are in the record here. You know, they weren't.
Okay, good. All right, great. And then I appreciate that. And the second thing was, Frank, do you, um, do you have the data on, did you kind of write down and record all of the, all of the doors that were knocked? And if the person was home or not? Do you have like that canvas sheet?
What we have is the, of the, the managers, they went floor to floor with their, with their aides. And what, as they knocked, if they were able to assist, they filled them for some. One thing I would say about the, about the survey for the future, it didn't, it did require you to have an email. And there was even a lot of people that didn't have email. So what we did is we created email for those people. An email that we use noemail@noemail@gmail.com and we were able to enter their responses, whatever they gave. So I think, um, that was another thing, having an email be mandatory as part of.
There was no physical, there was no, there was no physical copy?
There was. They, they took that with them so that they can leave it for the people that they couldn't get and if anybody wanted to fill it. But the actual response to get like that kind of survey, um, data on it, uh, it does require, require an email. And we, for people that didn't, like I said, we used the noemail@email.com for the people that.
Okay. So, so there's, just to answer the question. Just, just to answer the question, there's, there's no, there's no canvas sheet of.
I need you to talk one at a time, not, not conversation, please, one at a time.
There, there's no canvas sheet for the housing authority campus of, of us knocking on doors and, and whether or not we reach that person, uh, or maybe try it again. We, we don't have anything like that, right?
I do know, but for the next pass, we could do that.
All right. Uh, just one more, sorry, just Commissioner, I just, I just wanted to follow up to say, you know, this is like, like we said, there are a lot of steps beyond this, right? This is kind of one of the first big, big chunks, but I, I would just suggest as the board to consider. You know, there, there are some very specific consultants in, in the world and the in your, in your region and I'm sure Susan has a, a list too, but that, that specifically deal with public outreach and, and you know, do this for a living and get very have a lot of different and innovative strategies to get feedback in a, in a, in a very wide range. And that, that might be something to, to think about for each of these following steps as far as the redevelopment plans and the even down to the individual building designs, um, to, to kind of gain some more consistency of what I think you're looking for. Um, it, it's something we, we've, you know, we work with them in other public sector work often that they, they come in on their own and have that stuff. So I would, I would say that's a, that's a thing to consider for the board moving forward.
Yeah, great, great idea.
Okay.
All right. Further, if we can, uh, move on, Director. Now, are we, we're going to have an overview of what was, um, published on Tuesday or?
And I, I think Susan gave the verbal.
Yeah, I did the overview, Chairman. No, we figured that to the extent at this stage that, um, everybody really needs the time to read it. That we then would be able to, um, then respond and point out certain things, but at this stage, I think that you know, we've gone over this so much with you guys, with all of you, that we thought it was not the most productive way of moving forward. We're happy to do whatever you'd like, but that's where we were.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Um, all right, Director, if we could move on to the next item in your report and thank you for that. And thank you for getting that, um, done on time according to schedule. We appreciate all of your efforts for the past year plus, and you brought nothing but professionalism to this process and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you all. We continue to work with the city on the Internet Accessibility Project that's just moving along at its own pace. Gathering best information for best practices for what will hopefully become a Wi-Fi system for the Hoboken Housing Authority. At Fox Hill Gardens, our renovation contracts are in process. On policing security issues, uh, the Security Committee did meet continuing their development of a replacement for the run-strike policy. We're calling this, uh, policy the criminal activity policy. And we'll have that document for the full board to review as soon as it matures. Just a little more, we're going over some issues. And I really want to thank the leadership of that Security Committee that's working hard on that project. Uh, we are working on a project to add lighting around the route, around the Marshall Drive horseshoe right now. Uh, and to add some more significant lighting there, we should be able to be moving toward installation on that soon. Uh, we have made significant progress over the past month in interviews and selection of new maintenance director and our public policy positions. Uh, we're down to the finalists. I think you're going to see some good news on that very, very soon. We have a, a invitation for applications to serve as trustees on the Housing for Hoboken Board. Uh, we will get that published by the end of March. You've got my guarantee on that. We've been working so hard on the actual plan that we've kind of let that slide for the past month. But we will get that up and invite invitations for the Housing for Hoboken Board. Attachment two to my, to my report is the monthly vacancy report. Uh, we continue to refine that format. Over the past month, we had 18 new move-ins and in February and two transfers during the month of February. On special capital projects, our initiatives right now are the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Work at Adams Gardens and Andrew Jackson. The work is being done and the exterior of Andrew Jackson Gardens, they're actually going toward completion on that soon. And the boilerwork at Adams will begin soon. We anticipate in May. If you remember, there is a delay in, on the, on the, the supply chain there. Uh, so we will be starting that project off as soon as that weather breaks. And certainly we will have that done by the time the weather gets cold next year. The facade project at Monroe and Adams has begun construction. Please do announce that against supply chain issues, the brick came in. Uh, they're able to get over there and work. Uh, so we're going to have that exterior facade at Monroe and Adams, um, done shortly. Uh, management has been working on a review of our tenant files. Uh, this includes scanning all the files into our new system. So every one of our files will be scanned digitally. We, uh, have also started a review process on those files. We have reached out to an independent organization. And some of you may have heard of the Nan McKay Group. Uh, that's a, uh, probably the most respected organization in public, public housing, uh, administration in the country. Um, and we're going to be, I'm going to be asking them to come in and do some sample testing on all of our files to see where we are on our filing. We had training a couple of years ago. So we're going to have them come in to do some sample testing on our files and take that from there on training of our staff. On our housing choice vouchers, uh, we are still planning on getting a project-based assistance, RFP, out on the street. Uh, I think now that the plan's published, we'll be able to turn our attention to that. Uh, we do have five tenant-based vouchers out there that will be, need to come back by the end of March. Um, and we'll see how many folks can get rented under that and how much contract authority we have, should they not be able to rent. We have had REACT inspections at Monroe and Adams, been a major event for us. Um, NCCG during the past month, we have received initial scores for each app. I am pleased, uh, that we've shown significant progress from the last inspections without a doubt. Uh, staff is reviewing the results. We're confident that at Adams and Monroe that week, we have some items that we can appeal to HUD, REACT. Um, for example, at Monroe, they take points off because of the brickwork we've got under contract. We, we have to appeal that to HUD, and they'll give us those points back once we appeal that to HUD. So we expect that at Adams and Monroe, for the first time in many, many years, we will actually pass that REAC inspection out there. I'll be able to confirm that with you at the next meeting, but I'm very, very happy to say that we, we did get the results back from the CCG inspection, and we're reviewing that now to see what may be appealable in that. Um, with the last of the colder weather, our boiler crew has been busy keeping our buildings warm and the hot water running. And we continue to work on special, uh, and preventative repairs. Um, we do expect to bring the 2020 audit to the board for your approval in April. Uh, we couldn't quite get the meeting together in March, and again, we don't have a deadline until September to do that. But I want to get that out of the way with the board. Um, Mr. Daniel Perez, would you like to give a little review of our Resident Services Report?
Uh, thank you so much, Director. Um, and good evening, Commissioners. Uh, on my Snapchat, I just wanted to highlight three items. Uh, the first one is the Learning Center. As you know, we have a great partnership with the Hoboken Public Library. And they have been using our, um, what used to be the old Security Office at Jason de Mama Johnson Field. Uh, due to the pandemic, there have been some closings at some, uh, primarily at our location. Uh, however, they're back, uh, and they're open Wednesdays and Fridays for now, from, uh, three PM to six PM, uh, providing, uh, research and homework support to our families. Uh, anyone that has any questions relating to the additional services and support provided by the Hoboken Public Library at the Learning Center, uh, you can actually reach me or call the main office, and I'll be able to get you in touch with, uh, with the representatives that work at the Hoboken Public Library for additional services, support, and programs. As we work through this year, and hopefully through the end of this pandemic, we'll be able to, uh, get up or go back to, uh, all of the services and resources, um, that the Hoboken Public Library offers and scale those up to our community in the next, uh, few months or so. So, uh, thanks so much to the Hoboken Public Library and, uh, Jenny Poole for, uh, their leadership. Uh, additionally, as you know, we, uh, the board approved, uh, a, a few of our providers to, uh, for services and programs to our community. And Community Lifestyles will be starting their spring football, flag football program, uh, first week in April. Registration is open now to Housing Authority residents and all Hoboken residents. So please go to their website, communitylifestyles.org to register for their flag football program. And finally, in, um, highlights, uh, the Salvation Army has this amazing free overnight camp that I would like to share with the residents of the Housing Authority. It is free. Uh, if you want information on how to register, all of the registration is online. Uh, please go to the Hoboken Housing Authority website. Under Feature News, you're gonna see a logo for the Salvation Army. Click on that, and it will bring you to their page. And you'll be able to register your child for three sessions over the summer for their overnight summer camp. It's free, free lodging and food for four to five days at their own camp in Pittstown, New Jersey. So thank you so much, Director, and thank you, Commissioners.
And thank you, Mr. Dan- Daniel, and with that, that concludes my report.
Uh, I have a quick question, Chairman.
Yes.
Will we be, we'll, we'll be back in person, right, next month? Is that right?
I would like to be, yes.
Oh, okay, cool.
Uh, can I comment on where the law stands on that?
Certainly.
As of Monday, the governor has lifted all of his executive orders with respect to COVID-19. There are no longer any requirements with respect to masks, attendance in terms of size in a room other than the fire limit size, and no social distancing requirement. I thought it was intriguing when the governor made his announcement about that. He pointed out that since Sandy, there has been an executive decision that constitutes an emergency, separate and apart from an executive order. And that emergency is still in effect. So is the COVID-19 separately declared emergency. However, although that emergency permits us to conduct the meeting virtually, it does not mandate that we have to. So it's totally open now to consider returning to a regular meeting schedule in person. I'll point out to you that, and we have other people on the phone who know more about that than I do. Uh, I believe the City of Hoboken is taking action with respect to that similarly. And then the other part, which Mr. Echols already alluded to in his report, is that if we're gonna take action on our meetings, we should also consider the impact that that will have with respect to the use of our community rooms. Again, the community rooms can be used without any limitation as of this month, past month.
I, I like, I like Dave's answer better.
No, I just wanted to point out, Commissioner.
I know, I know, that was a lot. That was a lot, to get to the same, to, to get to yes, we can do it. Thank you, thank you for that. That was very informative. Appreciate it.
Well, he's an attorney, you never.
You get billed by, you get billed by hours, so.
Yeah, exactly right. It just, that just cost us two fifty.
Exactly.
Did you just raise my rate, Commissioner?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner, where is, Commissioner, where is?
I just have two questions. So my first question, well, one is, um, Director, this, the door in Stairwell A of 311 Harrison, I know I, I had informed you guys, that door still does not close all the way. It's still staying stuck. It, it stays halfway open. So that's one of my concerns. Um, my second, um, question I have, and the reason I'm asking is because I've been approached by various people, residents and non-residents, who have applied for housing here. Um, so it's my understanding that when you apply for the Hoboken Housing Authority, one of the priorities is that if you're a Hoboken resident, obviously that's a priority. Um, well, it was, right? Now, what's happening is, um, residents are seeing people who are not from town moving into town. And they are concerned that Hoboken residents are not being given the, um, priority of, of being housed. And I just want to make sure, I, I, I want to know what's right, what's not right to say, how is it working? Um, I need, I need to understand it, so then I can obviously answer other people who have approached me on it.
Sure. And, and Frank, you want to talk about the, uh, uh, any, any priority list we have in our ACOB? I don't have our ACOB open at the moment.
So Hoboken is not a priority.
Right.
It's local is not a priority.
When we passed.
Using there.
Yeah. When we passed the admissions and continued occupancy policy last year, um, the, the Hoboken residency was not a priority.
Okay, so basically, we should be referring them back to the A-COP then. But domestic violence, homelessness, all that are still priorities, correct?
Veterans are, veterans are always number one.
Um, okay.
Across the board, and then.
That's, that's a, sorry to interrupt, but that, that's a federal requirement too, correct?
Yeah, and, and a state requirement. So there's no question.
Actually, uh, Commissioner, the, the main requirement on veterans comes from a state law that applies specifically to housing authorities.
Another buck fifty right there, Andrew.
Yeah, that was it. Those were my, that was my only question, because again, since we have been having a lot of move-ins, and we have a lot of new people obviously in the community, now this is coming up. So, you know, at least now I know exactly what to say, because unfortunately, although I was on that A-COP meeting, I wasn't a commissioner at the point, at that point, I was a resident, I listened to it. I really didn't realize that Hobo, being a Hoboken resident was no longer a priority, because in the past, it used to be.
Yeah, it was.
And what I'd suggest is that I send those pages out to all of you. Um, because we've got some very clear pages in, in our current A-COP that Frank and his team work with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Actually, I didn't realize that being a current Hoboken resident, um, wasn't part of it anymore either. Uh, the other thing that we need to, we need to look into, you know, and I, I say this after having, um, bumped into a gentleman that works for in our building where I live, uh, who, I think within the last two years got a, got a voucher, I'm not sure if it was, I think it was one of our vouchers, not a D.C. voucher. But, you know, we, we also should have a, you know, not, not just a requirement for work, because I don't want somebody to be able to get a job for a couple of months and be able to bump up a list because of that, that they're gonna not stick with. But somebody who's had a demonstrated history of working in this town, but isn't able to afford to live here. I mean, that, that we should certainly be given a a bonus to. I mean, you know, we want, we want our, we want the people that our city run on a day-to-day basis to be able to have, uh, first crack at, at our homes when they open up.
So the question then, that is back to be asked is, do we want to reconsider some of those priorities? And what would that process look like, uh, as far as getting that done from the perspective of our, our duty as the board, and then moving that through the, the proper channels?
I agree.
I would suggest the starting point is, like I said, for me to send out that section of the A-COP and over the whole A-COP to everyone, so. But if I, if I highlight those pages for you, you can read through them and, you know, get, get again, re-familiar with where, where the Housing Authority is on that, and then we could start talking about, we could have a, uh, we do have an, uh, ACOB Admission Policy Subcommittee, and we could call that Subcommittee together before the next meeting to have a conversation.
Great, thank you.
Sounds great. All right. And then.
Uh, just a sheriff, just a sec. Uh, at the risk of having, uh, Mr. Russo ask whether or not my clock is running, uh, the question I have is, should I start to prepare materials to reflect that the April meeting is going to be in person?
Yes, yes, within, within, yes. Within all bounds of it can be done, I'll be very much happy to do that, Tom.
Well, legally it can be done. It's in the hands of the board as to whether or not we do it. I haven't heard any objections, so. Uh, my proposal is that we revise the materials to, uh, reflect that the April meeting will be in person. The annual meeting notice technically will work, but the notice for this specific meeting needs to be changed.
Great, so let's change it, please, with all due haste.
Excited, yeah.
All right, great. So you're done with your report now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sorry. Well, switch window, my agenda's on. All right, so now we're on to the public comment period, correct? All right, so do we have anybody queued up to speak?
Share, you, yeah, we have no, uh, no emails, we have no Q and A, and we have no chat.
Okay, all right, so as we can move on from that part of the agenda then. All right, uh, so reports of committees, do we have any reports of committees? I know the committee work I've been involved in was, is all with the Torrey Gallus. In recent days, do we have reports from any of the other committees? Okay. Uh, no unfinished business that I know of. Uh, so Resolution Number 2022-03.01, a resolution to approve the minutes for the February 10th, 2022 Monthly Board Meeting. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? If we could have a vote, please, Director.
Anne, Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Hi.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 2022-03.02, a resolution authorizing the payment of the monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, if we could have a vote, please, Director.
Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Hi.
J Sanford.
And.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 2022-03.03, a resolution to extend the contract for fiscal audit services. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comment? If you could have a vote, please.
Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
D Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Hi.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 2022-03.04, a resolution to extend the contract for landscaping services. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Any questions or comment? If we could have a vote, please.
Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Hi.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
Now, Resolution Number 2022-03.05, a resolution to award a contract for general legal services. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I thought, I thought Commissioner Russo was gonna make that second, after all the legal jokes he's made tonight.
She beat me.
All right, do we have any questions or comment on this? None from the attorney, please. All right, if we could have a vote, please.
Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Let me explain, no, yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
You spoke too, way too quickly when you made that jump. Would have had more effect, so.
Yeah, right, you're right.
All right, Resolution Number 2022-03.06, a resolution to award a contract for special legal services. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comment? If we could have a vote, please.
Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Hi.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
All right, and Resolution Number 2022-03.07, a resolution to award a contract for security consultant services. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I would like you to add a little color to this, please, Director, because it's, you know, security is always one of our top priorities.
Sure, absolutely. This is the firm that essentially is our consultant to keep our, uh, camera systems up and running. Um, they, they handle all that complicated behind the scenes, uh, whether it's the connections between us and the Hoboken Police Department, so they have their system up and running. Um, our switches, our servers, our cameras, um, everything that goes into that system, which is a pretty complicated system. Uh, this is the firm that guides us through that and makes sure that our system functions correctly.
And will they be meeting with our Security Committee?
Oh, we'd be glad to have them in the Security Committee. Yeah, yeah, we'd be glad to. I don't think, I don't think we've done that recently, but, uh, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to give the status. Because, uh, we are actually pulling together a CDBG application, which is gonna, uh, include, um, some things with the camera system, so this would be a great opportunity to do that.
And, and if, if I could suggest that we also have a member of, um, a representative of the Police Department at that meeting as well, just in case there are any concerns that haven't been, you know, properly aired out, that we can
address.
Merit out of one of the consultants.
Absolutely, Chairman. We'd be glad to do that.
Great. All right, any, uh, questions or comment? If we could have a vote, please.
Anne Passato.
Yes.
A Louie.
Yes.
Dee Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
And Russo.
Hi.
Jay Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three point zero eight, a resolution to approve a shared agreement with the city of Hoboken. For the community solar. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Director, I'm going to ask you to add a little color to this as well.
Or, and if, if we need any, any other color as well, I think Jennifer's still on the line with this as well. This, this project you had a presentation on, I believe, at the last board meeting. And it's a shared services agreement with the city. The city was able to obtain approval to participate in this program through a state grant. Essentially, what's, what happens is that a solar farm gets built elsewhere. And the reduced cost of the electricity that is generated by that solar farm. The benefit of that solar farm, reduced energy will be realized by our residents. And this is an agreement that clearly states that the savings. That comes from the solar energy project will be used for the sole benefit of resident services. We did a presentation to the resident advisory board on this project this past month and it was, was received extremely well. In very round numbers, we are expecting that on a yearly basis. We would be able to capture anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. That would go directly toward resident services. And this money would be spent with a cooperative system of, of talking to the residents. Seeing how much money we'd have at the end of that final year and coming up with a program. That the residents would want to spend this money for on some energy related project. Some of the ideas that came out of the resident advisory board was job training. For teenage enough populations on possibly job training to work on solar energy projects or green energy projects. Some, some folks mentioned green wall projects that might be built. Gardening projects that might be instituted, an electric. Transit bus was mentioned during the course of that. This isn't the time to make that decision because we don't know how much that savings is going to be over the course of the year. But it's really a great opportunity for us and it's really a win-win. The environment wins because there are less fossil fuel use because of the solar energy. We do not see a change in our electric rates. But the reduced amount of cost to, to generate that electricity is returned to the housing authority. Specifically for the use of the housing authority residents. And, and it, it's really a great project. This is the second year the city applied for it. They were chosen this year. And we're, we're just excited that the city approached us and for our residents wanted to participate in this program. So what we have before you tonight is that shared services agreement that we would then enter into with the city.
All right, um.
And from my perspective, there's really little downside, if any downside to this.
Director Gonzalez, I think you're on the phone. Do you have anything to add to that or?
I don't, I don't see her here. She was.
I think she dropped off.
But she may have dropped off during time.
Okay. All right. And then actually, well, I'll wait till the very end of the meeting, but please, um. Councilman and Commissioner Russo, if you could just remind me, I want to make one point about. The city and the plan that was released on Tuesday, if I, if I could, if you could. Help me to remember to do that before the end of the meeting. All right, if we could have a vote then on this, please. If there are no further questions or comments. All right, if we could have a vote, please.
And Passato.
Yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
Dee Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
And Russo.
Hi.
Jay Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
All right, then resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three point zero nine, a resolution to introduce a draft. Drug abuse and other criminal activity policy. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comment? All right, if we could have a vote, please.
And Passato.
Yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
Dee Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
And Russo.
Hi.
Jay Sanford.
Yes.
E Sightsman.
Yes.
All right. And then on to new business. So I, I do want to make this point. So, uh, Dr. Russo, Council President Russo and Commissioner Russo, I'm going to ask you. A favor, could, could you do everything you could to get this, this plan prominently posted on the city website? So the public can, can view it and we can get the word out best, most effectively and. And also maybe a Nixol alert to go with it beyond. I mean, I know we have access to a Nixol, this Nixol system, but I think when they come from the city, it gets that many more eyeballs.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. The only thing I would ask to Director Echo, could you do me a favor? Just send me an email asking for such and I'll make sure it's forwarded right to the mayor's office directly.
You will have it promptly.
Beautiful.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, great. Yeah, exciting stuff. I mean, I think this plan is, is, you know, very good and. And it really, it prioritizes things very well, which the first priority, I can't emphasize enough, we have to give our residents who have been living in. Housing that, you know, despite our best efforts is, is dilapidated at this point and we have to get those residents into. Into proper housing that they deserve. And first and foremost, that has to be our priority. So. I think this plan, plan will achieve that and I'm very excited tonight to see this finally come to fruition. Any new business from anybody else?
Nothing here.
All right, there's no need for closed session tonight, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, wait, 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 before I make that, happy birthday, Commissioner Sightsman.
Thank you.
Hope we didn't rain on your birthday too much.
Now, Frank. See, at this point in a, in a city council meeting. Jimmy Farina would start to sing happy birthday.
Uh, you know.
Isn't it the, isn't it the councilman's birthday coming up?
It is on the thirteenth. It is as well. Going to be twenty-nine. I can't believe it.
You guys got to get together for a drink at midnight on the eleventh, the halfway. All right. All right. Well, with that, now it is time to make the motion to close and make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.